We're going. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board's Business Meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you might notice, Kyle isn't here today. He was excused. He will not be coming. So, we will start additions, deletions. Mr. Blatcher?
Nothing for me, Mr. Supervisor?
I believe there is.
Deletion?
I'm sorry, the Fire Chief appointment. I'm still on my open space greenways. What I'm looking at is move to delete action item number one, Fire Chief Appointment.
Support.
If you want to, I'll just jump in for you.
Go ahead.
And that's being taken off simply because the Commission is going to have their discussion tomorrow on it. So, obviously, what we were going to do was act on their recommendation, which we don't have yet. So, that's the whole purpose of that one.
Do you want to...
Oh.
The meeting tomorrow, is that open to the public?
Yes, it is. As far as I know, Fire...
My understanding is that Brian is going to have that televised as well. The individual interviews for the two finalists start at 4:00 PM tomorrow afternoon in this room, and that'll be the first interview, and then 5:00 PM is the second interview. The Commission will then make a recommendation of the Township Board as to which of the two should be hired.
There will be a special meeting on Thursday of the Township Board here at 6:00 to entertain that recommendation.
That is correct.
Between the three of us, we got it out.
Any other? Well, we have to vote on that.
Yes.
So, there's been a motion to delete action item number one, the Fire Chief Appointment. Any other questions or talk about that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that will be taken off. Okay, anything else?
I haven't... Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody over there had something.
Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to delete action item number three, which is a change order for road paving with ASI as the contractor.
Support.
This was for additional work that the... We had hoped that the contractor would be able to do this week. His schedule didn't... Ended up not being able... Not permitting that, and so that's being delayed until later this summer, Derek, July...
I'll go into it a little bit in my report.
Okay.
I don't want to do it here.
Yeah.
This will probably come up at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. So, just not ready for...
Not ready for the Board.
Not ready to go. Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none. We have a motion to delete action item number three, change order road paving ASI. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That. Anything else?
I have an addition. I would request that the Township Board allow the Fire Commission to interview any of the candidates that they had from their applicant pool for the position of Fire Chief.
I'll second that.
The reason I brought this up now is I've been working on this and listening to what is going on, and last... Brian told me before, I had 10 days previous, so I missed that 10-day... I wish I think was last Thursday. I missed the 10-day because it was last weekend I decided to... I thought this was appropriate to put on. And the reason is, I just believe that by not letting the Fire Commission interview whomever they wish from that, and if they feel they're... And it's no offense to anybody out there, but if they feel that there's nobody else to be interviewed, then that's fine. That's on the Commission. But I just feel that they should have the opportunity. I don't believe in the side groups that first will vet and then go to a Commission. We had the same thing happen with the Police Department, and it was knocked down to whomever, and then the Fire Department is knocked down to whomever, and there'll be two left. And I don't... This is not about an individual. This is about a process. This is about what I believe is the correct process. It is the best practice, and I just don't believe it's correct how it was done. I think there could be a problem with it also. I'm not going to get into that. We already had a letter from a, what is you would call maybe an expert in municipal law, and when the police chief hiring was in. So, I just believe that it would be appropriate. It would be in the best interest, and I think that it would be fair and just. And once again, I'm going to leave it to the Commission, and then the Commission would bring it to the Board. If the Commission feels there's no one else they would like to, well, that's up to the Commission. But they never got that chance. They never got the ability to do that. So, that's why I'm bringing this now. And again, I missed... I spoke to Brian in the past, and obviously, I did not have the 10-day... It was approximately 10 days for this one to have it put on the agenda.
And I would add on to that, that by limiting the applicants a Commission can interview and giving them a pre-selected two applicants, which isn't even really a variety, we are removing autonomy from that Commission. And there's no point having a Commission system if we're not going to enable them and empower them to make the decisions that they're the experts on. So, I think we need to give them the opportunity to interview all of the applicants that they want to interview.
All I would say is that the procedure that we're following, that has been followed so far, is the way absolutely every other employee in this Township is hired. The Commission is actually not in the best position to hire that individual. Keep in mind that, in this case, this is the head of a department. This individual's going to work for Derek, the Township Administrator. It's an administrative position. It's an employee of the Township. No Commission is sitting there and in that position to know about the employment of it. The Commissions know about the business of the department. They don't know about... I don't believe they know about the administration of the department. This is something that... It did work well for the police. It is something that is done for every other job in here. Derek was hired under this procedure. All the other managers were hired under this procedure. I don't know why Fire and, you know, would be any different. We had Derek put together, and we're going to explain all this because of things that have gone out on social media, and we'll talk about that later. But Derek put together a group of four that consisted of a Fire Chief, the Chair at that point, the Chair of the Fire Commission. So, there was some bad information that was put out. The Fire Commission Chair was part of that, another manager, and Derek. And they went through the... Twenty-eight people put in. They went through and vetted them.
Redacted.
Well, I mean, okay. Uda, but I'm... You can say that if you want to. I don't want to get into every minutia item of that, but it's not... It's not something that was done lightly. They did a very good job of going through, and if an individual didn't make the... They interviewed out of the 28. They went through and broke it down to six individuals. Those six individuals were interviewed by that group. None of us, as far as I know, nobody on this Board was part of any of that. It was Derek and his group that did that, and they came out with the top two candidates. We had a lot of former or current Fire Chiefs put in for that job. So, you would think, you know, it was a strong group of people that put in. So, and going through all that, talking about possible problems, we've gone through this. This is the procedure that was set out. To bring it up now where we're... Got it down to these two people, we could have some legal problems if we all of a sudden changed the whole procedure at the end of the road to try and fit a specific... What's been out there is a specific few to get in. So, I myself would be against that, and that's my opinion. Uda, you... David?
I just want a clarification from Joe.
Yes, sir.
You said, "Allow the Fire Commission to interview anyone they want," or "Out of the people who submitted applications and resumes for the position?"
Oh, yes. No, "Out of the applicant group," I believe I said. "Out of the pool or a group," I said. "Applicant group."
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And I would point out, I mean, Jim, you mentioned the Police Commission and how well that worked. Well, three times the Police Commission made a recommendation, and three times this Board rejected it at a 4-3 margin. So, it didn't exactly build a strong consensus. It doesn't... It doesn't appear... Whether it is a high-quality and transparent process, I won't say it's not, but I will say it doesn't have the appearance of a transparent process because it's a little bit of a black box on how people get through that interview process to where they are today.
If you give it... If you put it with the Commission, that's a black box, too. That's how they got through.
It meets in public meetings. These weren't public meetings.
Do you have public meetings to hire your people in where you work?
No, but the United States Army doesn't host public meetings for anything. We have an obligation.
Well, and you're with the Army. But I mean, you know, no business does. No business has public meetings.
This isn't a business. This is a government.
This is the administrative end of it. It is not the people's end of it. I know you think... You believe, and that's fine, that everything... I mean, every move we make, we should be reporting out. You know, I'm going to get coffee now. You want, you know, the time that you go. An operation can't work like that. It just isn't feasible.
Well, I think we conduct the people's business, and we report to the people, and that the processes should be transparent.
And the process tomorrow, they will enter... They will have their interview and their discussion. They will give a recommendation, whatever that is. Their recommendation might be, "We don't have a recommendation." That could be, and then the Board will deal with that. That's how it works. And there's all kinds of systems you can have. I'm not saying you couldn't do it that way, but the point is, we're 90% through this, and now, all of a sudden, we want to change everything. We can't do it.
We don't want to change everything. We want to give the Commission back some autonomy, and if they see an applicant out of the other 26 that they want to interview, they should be able to.
And the basis for that is simply because, you know, you would like that to happen. That's the only basis for that. It's not like what we're doing is improper. It's... It is, you know, it's the process we're following.
There's not one applicant that lives in Groseal that could potentially be a qualified Fire Chief.
In that group, evidently not. There were two... I believe there were two active people who put in and one retiree that put in, and they were vetted just like everybody else. And, I mean, certainly, the criteria can't be, "They live on Groseal." First of all, it's illegal to have that, but that would not be the highest reason for it. It's their background. You want to get the best person. We have two chiefs who have run large departments, you know, and in fact, there were chiefs that didn't make the cut that ran larger departments. So, they... We have good people. The point being, there are good people out there, and that's what we're trying to get. That's what, you know, everybody here is charged with. And the idea that of... Again, I would mention that what we're hiring is an administrator, somebody to run the department. We're not hiring a volunteer to do fires and EMT. We're hiring somebody to run that department. That is their primary job. Yes, they will help on the other things. And right now, right now, neither of those candidates, to my knowledge, live on the island. That doesn't mean that they're not going to move onto the island, which has been a... From what I read, certainly has been assumed. So, but that went through the vetting process, and I don't... I wasn't privy to any of the discussions, so I don't know what kind of questions were asked about that, but certainly, I would think that's something that would be asked. So, I... You know, just my opinion is that the process we're following is good, and we're going to get a very good candidate out of that. So, that's... David, did you have anything else?
No, that was it. I just needed that clarification.
All right. Well, what I want to contribute to this conversation is, one, is the first question is, is this request coming from the Fire Commission? I know I am no longer the liaison. You have attended a meeting. You are the Chair. You are the Supervisor. You're the Manager. Has this request come to any of you from the Commission itself?
I haven't heard a thing from the Commission.
Okay. So, what I want to say is, I have to agree with Jim on the premise that tomorrow there will be interviews of the two candidates put forward by the initial committee given to the Fire Commission. The full Fire Commission will be there. The public is invited. Other Township Board members are invited to sit in. The Commission, at that point, always had and has at least three options. One is to make a recommendation for the candidate that they would like to have. Two, they can make an alternative solution to the Board, saying, "We have a Plan B," so to speak, or they can say, "We want a do-over," which essentially would be what Trustee Porcelli and Trustee Jaeger are saying. So, at the off-chance that we find a candidate after the interviews tomorrow, and we can choose somebody by Thursday, which would be good for the department to have a chief, I would say I would not approve of this last-minute change. But if the Commission comes forward after its meeting tomorrow and says, "We would like to look at either the full 28, or the six, or the two, or start over," then we have that option to do at our next meeting.
It would be the same thing. Absolutely. They would... Whatever they want to do, they bring it to us, and that's what we're... We'll make a determination on.
So, I think we would end up with the same result that you're requesting. If it comes from the Commission, we'll have to address it, and not just if... I don't mean if, like if they say or not, but having it come from the Commission, the Board will then have to address it, and we'll move on from there. That's the reason why I would say, at this late stage, no, but for, you know, open it up for the future. Because on the other level, as you know, we're looking for a new Recreation Director, and we're following the same process. We're having a committee of Township staff, managers, volunteers, and potentially a retired Rec Director vet the applications that come in, and they are redacted. So, you can't identify who the person is. You can't tell, you know, where they live, whether they're male or female, what their age might be, et cetera. And then, based on those, they make a recommendation, and the Rec Commission, at that point, would do the same thing, would interview candidates and bring a recommendation to the Board. If we change this process today, then we will probably have to look at changing the process for future hires, and I'm not prepared for us to have that conversation today. But if that's what we want to do, then we have some time moving forward to do that. Does that resonate?
Thank you, Uda. Carl?
One of the most important things this Township Board is ever going to do is hire the best person available for a position. In looking at that, I had questions and received answers as to the process that was employed, and I want to expand a little bit on what's been said. I've been practicing law for almost 40 years. I have had the experience of seeing what is good and what is bad about the hiring process, about what works, about what's discriminatory, what's allowed, and what's not allowed. In all that time, I have never seen a process that is absolutely perfect or second-guessed. But I had questions, and I went to the Supervisor, and I had an opportunity to talk with the Township Manager, and I also spoke with the Chair of the Fire Commission. My understanding is the process that was employed is as follows. Applications were solicited. Notice went out. Twenty-eight people responded. Twenty-eight people responded with an application and with resumes. I saw the resumes. I went through and read every one of them. Several inches of paper. There's some that you would look at and say, "Well, all right. They want to interview," or "They're trying to move up within the profession." But I noticed each and every one of those resumes had the names, the addresses, redacted. It was, in my estimate, a blind application process. And in speaking with the individuals that were involved, they all reviewed them, and they ranked them. Twenty-two were put in this pile and said, "We've got six other..." 22 were put in this pile and said, we've got six others here that are better. Those six went into this pile. And the people on that interviewing panel consisted of Derek Thiel, your township manager, who has done this several times before, not only at Groseal, but at Gibraltar, and is very good. And Derek was tasked with putting together a panel that would allow him to help navigate and make a recommendation. On that panel was Derek and was Brian Freel. Brian Freel has worked in this township. Brian Freel has been part of township government, and Brian Freel has his pulse, as does Derek Thiel, on the community. They added a third person to that group, and that was Chairman of the Fire Commission, Jerry Bringard. And I know all the firefighters in here know Jerry, Jerry very well. To know Jerry is to respect Jerry. I've had the pleasure of knowing Jerry, coincidentally, on a couple of different levels. He is beyond reproach. Jerry rose to a Level 2 with Ford Motor Company, meaning he was reporting to vice presidents. Jerry is a man above reproach. He has the integrity and the honesty like I have never seen before. And he's a smart man, and he's also a 10-year veteran of the Fire Department, and he's been a Commissioner and the Chair. The panel then looked around for somebody that would be on the outside, would have no real contacts with Groseal. Again, part of what I consider to be a blind selection process. They went to Tom Mercur from Rockwood, who's the chief down there. Tom doesn't know anybody in this selection process that I'm aware of. It'd be kind of surprising, and maybe wouldn't recognize names, but again, he's looking at 28, and they put 22 in one pile and say, this is not somebody who has the credentials, or the education, or the background, or the experience. So they then ranked them. And you may correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thiel, and Mr. Buttoney, or anybody else who's involved, but they then ranked them. And they went through a ranking on those remaining six people and said, these are the six people that, on paper, have a lot of the materials, the background, and the experience that we're looking for. We don't know who they are because their numbers, but we have six people here that we want to interview. And that panel then interviewed six people. And when they finished with the interviews, they said, we have two people that we think stand head and shoulders above everybody else. Again, that was the township manager, the deputy clerk, the chairman of the Groseal Fire Commission, a former firefighter of 10 years, and a current firefighter chief down in Rockwood. That's the panel that did the interview. The selection process was based on a blind application process. There wasn't any of, this is who you know, or this person lives next door to me, or this person I know to be a good person, who can do that. They did not just look at an application for the Fire Department. They looked at the credentials to take it up a notch above what everybody else currently was offering with those other 26 resumes and applications. It wasn't done with the idea that we want to shut people out. It was done with the idea that we want the best for Groseal. Two months ago, Greg Carmazin sat in here, and Greg noted that, when it comes to the budget, he looked at Jim and said, this is a strong step forward in terms of being able to comprehend and understand. Is it perfect? No. But Greg Carmazin looked at it and said, you should not be simply reaching to attain what the law requires. You ought to get the best you can, do the best you can, and have a program in place so that is the best for the community. I do not know of a better process, a cleaner process, a more honest process than I've ever seen, than where you take and do a blind review of applications, you take the six best. There wasn't anybody that was thrown out because of who they knew or who they didn't know. They took six people and said, these are the ones that we're going to interview, on a panel that was absolutely as fair and honest, and frankly, had the integrity to do a tough job, to winnow out 22 people and say, sorry. And they had to have known that some of the people were from Groseal, because we have a large department, and everybody wants to move up. But they didn't know any names. They didn't know whether there was one applicant or 10. What they knew is, we have 28 applications. And as Greg said, we want the best. So what they did was to winnow down those six to two and say, these are the two people. There is a certain amount of appeal to say that we have to hire somebody within, and God, I wish we could. I would love to see that. I'd love to see my neighbor, or any of my other people that I know in the department, be the next chief. But we have an obligation to do the very best for the community. And when I look at this as an appointment, it's not a lifetime appointment, they're not going to sit up on the Supreme Court, we're probably going to get four or five people that will come in here, or four or five years, rather, for one person. We're going to have a limited amount of time, and what my concern is, and my only concern is, if we're looking at a retiree, are we hiring somebody who's retired in place? And I will tell you, if that happens, there's the door. We can go through this again in six months, or whatever, but this isn't permanent. And the law prescribes, you cannot proscribes, you cannot simply look at a person's residency and say, they have to be a resident. I think it was 15 years ago or so, where the city Detroit had the residency requirement for fire, for police, for teachers, for municipal, and said, you had to live in the city Detroit. So there's an area near Warren and Telegraph, which is about as far out as you could go, that was called Copper Canyon, because that's where all the police and all the firefighters and everybody else lived in this enclave. Michigan courts have come down and struck that as an illegal requirement. Now, if we have an applicant off the island that is successful and moves here, I'm all in. If they don't move here, I can't do anything about it. It's not something that you are allowed to base a hiring decision on. The reverse of that is also true, that you have to be a resident here. You can't require residency as a condition of employment. Now, I look at the application process that was employed, I look at the people that were on the panel, and I see the results, the way they did it with the blind system. We're here for the best. As Greg Carmazin said, don't just settle for what you're required to do under the law. Do the best. Hire the best that you can. When I look at that, I would like to see some internal movement, and again, I just finished my first meeting with the Police Commission. Fire Commission. No more police. Fire Commission. But I looked, I looked at that, and it was very, very well-done. Kurt Kobalak did a good job. But I also look at that Commission and recognize the talent on there. And I'm not going to name names, but if this fire chief, whoever we hire, doesn't work out, send them out. Show them the door. But if they're here for three or four years and have something to offer, that's something else. But I want to see upward mobility with training within the department. Staff and Command School. I'd like to see two of our people in Staff and Command School starting in August, so that when they graduate in April, we're going to be moving them around, moving them up, hopefully, whatever the chief does. But Staff and Command School is a good way to do that. Let's kick it up a notch. That's where I'm coming from, and that's what I'm hoping that we are trying to all do, is hire the best and not pander to the voters, or look for some kind of vote next August. Do what's best for the community.
Jim, I just have one last, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Carl, I, I respect your opinion. I may not agree with it, but this was nothing about personal issues and who they were and how you guys did this. This is not what this is about.
Joe, I don't know who you mean, "you guys."
This is not about, what do you mean, "you guys"?
You said, "you guys," how you guys did this.
How this group, the group of four you just explained, did it.
I wasn't involved with the group of four.
Not you. These two guys and the other two gentlemen.
Okay.
Okay, let me speak, and let me finish. All I'm saying is, Derek, Brian, Mr. Mercur, Jerry Bringard, I have respect for you guys. This isn't about you personally and what you know about picking a fire chief. This is about two people only going to the Fire Commission and then making the pick. This is about a process. You explained, they're the greatest guys in the world, and I agree, some of them are. I really respect them. I mean, I really respect and I like their work. That's not what this is about, Carl. It's not a personal issue. You're right, it was a blind issue, how this occurred, and that's fine. That's that process. My process is that there's only two going to the Fire Commission. The exact same process happened to the Police Commission. The first time in history, it's been done like this with the Fire Department, and the first time in history, after I retired, did you hire the last two police chiefs. Not the one current one, the last two. And we saw what happened. So I don't want to hear how perfect everything's been. It hasn't been this way. That's all I want to know. I get it, I respect your opinion, I know this is going down, I get that, and we move on. And that's the way, I mean, it's a board vote. I fully get that. Uda, I respect your opinion. Dave, whatever yours was. Jim, I get it. That's respect. So let's move on, but you got to get it straight. I have nothing against these gentlemen at all that did this. This is not a bad-mouthing. This is not about them. This is about that I believe the process is flawed and incorrect, period. So, let's now call the question, let's get a vote.
That's, that's fine. Any other, any others? Seeing none. We have a, have a motion to add that the Fire Commission be able to interview anyone they want out of the 28 applicants that put in for the fire chief. And I'm going to do a roll call on this. Joe?
Aye.
Jamison?
Aye.
David?
Nay.
Uda?
Nay.
Carl?
No.
And I vote nay. So that will not be added. All right. Good discussion, good points brought out. Now, we have a presentation. From the Trenton Veterans Memorial Library.
Good evening. My name is Donna Jensen at 21057 West River Road, and I'm very proud to be here tonight to talk to everybody about your library. Just the main reason I'm here is to make sure everybody knows, on the board and also at home, that your library is in Trenton. Groseal's library is, called the Trenton Veterans Memorial Library, and we have all sorts of programs and opportunities for you there. And we have summer readings, starting June 1st, for all ages. So I just wanted to make sure you knew about all of that. So I think this works. I don't, I don't know. Is this working?
Yes.
So, all right, thank you. So, June 1st, you'll be able to sign up for summer reading, and it's not just for kids. So, with your library card, you do get free audible, audiobooks, ebooks, all sorts of interesting downloadable things. You don't have to pay for Audible anymore, you don't have to pay for your Kindle books. Your library card gets you all of that for free. We also have programs going on all month-long for all different ages. We have all sorts of things from retired Detroit police officers coming to talk about scams on the elderly. We have crafting, we have all sorts of things going on for you there. But our very biggest thing and most important thing that's coming up is our summer reading, so that as the kids are out of school, they can participate and win prizes for reading. And every Wednesday, there's going to be a program to get them into the library, so that they don't have that summer slump where they lose all of the good things they've learned throughout the school year. So you can see here that those are going to be starting right up after June 1st, I think, is a Thursday. And so that next Wednesday, every Wednesday at 2 o'clock, we're going to have a wonderful program, free, for all the kids at the library. There will also be some teen programming, and of course, there's going to be some adult programming, too. The adult programs, we're going to have an after-hours party, like we did last year, which is, is after the library closes, we turn it into an adult playground, and you get to have all sorts of fun for participating in the reading. There are raffles that are held weekly for the adults, and as you read, you earn tickets to the raffles. The raffles are for, from local businesses on Groseal, Brownstown, Woodhaven, Trenton, and you get tickets for those as well. I also would just wanted to let everybody know that there is a drop box here on Groseal for your books. It's in the Police Department, right as you walk in the door, it's right there. And those books are taken to the library three times a week, and we backdate them so that you don't get, charge late fines or anything. And I also wanted to let people know that, in case you aren't able to get out of the house, we can issue a temporary library card over email. So if you wanted to email, I'm not sure if you're going to get this whole thing there. You can email us at the library, and we can get you a temporary library card, and then you can get right into those downloadable books. And I also wanted to mention that there are a lot of...
Could you leave that, leave that up there and...
Sure can.
Is that T public?
It is. And I also wanted to mention that there are discounted Detroit Zoo passes with your library card. There's also discounted passes or tickets at a place called, it's called 313 Presents, and you get discounted tickets to select shows, live shows. So I'll give you that information, too. And then, the biggest discount that we have is called the Michigan Activity Pass, and that gives you hundreds of, access to hundreds of different places with discounted things. And some of those, I'm trying to think about some, what some of them are. I think Puyallup Tile Company, there's a lot of historical museums, and it's all over the state. So, that's a really interesting museum discount. So those are those three. There's, this is the Michigan Activity Pass up here, and then the Detroit Zoo, and then this is the 313 discounted tickets also. But this Michigan Activity Pass even has things as far north as the UP. There's discount tickets to Mackinac Island on the ferry, all, all sorts of crazy things, as well as museums and different things like that. And that also is the Michigan State Parks discounted ticket. So, your library card is, it's like a ticket to anywhere. It's a wonderful way to have a vacation during the summer for discounted and free things. And I just wanted to remind you to actually come into the library, because you're always welcome there. We have hours from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 9 to 5:00. And we're always just a phone call away, and we're there to help you in, in any way that we can. Does anyone have any questions at all? Yes?
Ms. Jensen, can you go back to your very first...
The summer reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I am curious, in the lower right-hand corner, Week 8.
Uh-huh.
Sword Play Workshop for ages 8-plus.
I know, I'm so excited. I'm so excited about that.
What does that mean? What happens?
You know, I haven't seen the troop in action, but I know some other libraries have had them, too. I think that one's actually going to be outside, not inside the library. But yes, we're going to be learning how to do all sorts of stunts and things like that. So we're really looking forward to that. So, get those kids in there, we'll, we'll keep them entertained, and teach them something, too.
I never wanted to have my children something that sharp, even when they were teenagers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's dangerous, but...
I hope not. It's interesting, is what it is.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to it myself. Does anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. In my haste to get into summer reading, I failed to have the agenda approved. So...
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we do have an agenda. I apologize for that.
And who knew that the library card was a power tool?
You know, you know, we hear that once a year, and, and we go, wow, that library card does a lot of things, and, and then we forget it, unfortunately. Thank you again, Donna. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, and just let me make a note here, we have public comment on agenda items only right now. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment on an agenda item?
Does that include the motion? That puts the special in the agenda items only?
No, it's the, it's the, it's the amended agenda is what you... No, it's the, it's the, it's the amended agenda is what you, you'd be voting on or be speaking on. If you want to speak on that, that'd be the second public comment. All right. Anything? I can't see. Nobody's back there, are there? Okay. Okay, so with, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-024, which consists of minutes of the May 8th, 2023 regular meeting, minutes of the May 8th, 2023 closed session, check registers dated through May 12th, 2023, approval to process and distribute payments through June 2nd, 2023, a zoning board of appeals resignation, downtown development authority resignation, 2023 land use agreement for JIRA and 2023 GISA land use agreement, and accept the resignation of a recreation director.
Any, any questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 23-024, which consists of the minutes of May 8th, 2023 regular meeting, minutes of the May 8th, 2023 closed session, check register dated through May 12th, 2023, approval to process and distribute payments through June 2nd, 2023, a zoning board of appeals resignation, downtown development authority resignation, the 2023 land user agreement of, for JIRA, the 2023 GISA land user agreement, and to accept the recreation director's resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is passed. I, I would just like to thank John Carnago for his years of service on the ZBA. He was, he is having some, some, some changes in his, in his, in his life. I believe he's moving. So he had to resign from the, from the board. But thank you, John. He was on there when I joined back in 2012. I believe John started in 2009. So he's put a lot of years in for us and I just wanted to thank him. Also, I'd like to thank Kelly Chesser for her service on the Downtown Development Authority Board. She has moved on, no longer has a business on McComb. So she had to resign. Thank you, Kelly, for your service. And with that, we will move on to our action items. David, I believe yours is the first one.
I'd like to make a motion based upon a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission and the Groseal Township Engineers that the Groseal Township Board hereby approves a contract with Al's Asphalt plus a 10% contingency for paving of Park Lane between Burnmouth and Horse Mill.
Support? I assume this is part of our paving program?
This is part of our paving project. Park Lane that basically extends just north of church over to Horse Mill. Currently a gravel road. But it's more than, it's more than the, than a residential road. It's really a throughway to get from, from church over to the Presbyterian Church. We received two bids. Al's Asphalt was low bidder. And the low, excuse me, the low bid amount was actually below our engineers' estimates. And this is a budgeted project within our road project for the year.
Questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none. We have a motion based upon the recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission and Groseal Township Engineers. The Groseal Township Board hereby approves a contract with Al's Asphalt totaling $993,212.50 plus a 10% contingency for paving of Park Lane between Burnmouth and Horse Mill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Al, have at it. Do you know when that would be starting, Derek?
Don't have a start date yet, but it's slated to be completed before school starts in the fall. So I believe we have a completion date of August 30th. So we'll have, now that the contract has been awarded, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and we should have a better idea for what that schedule looks like.
All right, thank you. Let's see, we got rid of number three. So David, you're still up?
I'd like to make a motion based upon a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission that the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes a contract with Groseal Lawn Sprinkler for the installation of a sprinkler system at the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant at an expense of $15,625.
Thank you, Uta.
In, in front of the wastewater treatment plant facing West River Road, there's going to be landscaping all along there to kind of cover up a little bit the front of the wastewater treatment plant. And in order to do that and have it, have it last, irrigation is, is necessary. And the irrigation system will draw from the canal. This was competitively bid and was budgeted at the beginning of the year for the wastewater treatment plant.
Other questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. Seeing none. We have a motion based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission that the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes a contract with Groseal Lawn Sprinkler for the installation of a sprinkler system at the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant at an expense of $15,625. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll water our wastewater treatment plant. Thank you. And Uta?
Okay, based upon the recommendation of the Community Recreation Commission, I would like to make a motion that we vote and award the pool fencing bid to Veterans Fence in the amount of $28,432. So as you know, we, we did just accept the resignation of our recreation director. But in her last couple of weeks, there was a flurry of activity. And one of the things that we have to announce is that Groseal Township was awarded the funds through the Wayne County IGA Parks Grant. Among the approved projects was replacement of the fence around the, the pool. And the CRC voted and approved to award this bid to Veterans Fence on May 4th in 2023. And so the, if we approve this tonight, the bid will be awarded. But as Kim pointed out, pending ordering shipment of product, we'll determine if they can get it done before the pool opens on June 15th, or if we'll wait to the end of the pool season. Our current fence is in need of repair and replacement, but it will get us through another season. But it would be really nice to have it ready for June 15. And if I'm not mistaken, Derek, this is the same company that did the fence for us at Centennial Farm?
Correct.
Yeah, correct. And they're also doing the Gibraltar Bay Connector. They're a Groseal-based business. So they're familiar with doing projects on the island.
I would like to ask your support for this. I, I know we, we sent you a, a ton of information, but a part of it for history lesson. When I read through it, I was amazed. Back in 1999, I signed the first intergovernment agreement as clerk. And we have done a lot of projects with Wayne County over the years. And we will be putting a small sign, again, thanking the county for this grant as part of putting up the fence. But Kim has already found a way to add that to the existing sign, I believe. So we'll save a little there, even just doing that, so.
Do you know what kind of fence you're going to put up?
I do not. I have not seen. I believe it's, there was a picture.
I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be aluminum again, or is it going to be?
I'm not sure of the material, but I know it's similar in design to what's out there.
What is currently there.
Very good.
Certainly nothing that a kid can wedge in and out of, so, yeah.
Kid-proof, huh?
Kid-proof, yeah.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none. We have a, a motion based upon the recommendation of the CRC, vote and award pool fencing bid to Veterans Fence in the amount of $28,432. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have your fence.
Thank you very much, John.
All right. And that was the last of our action items for tonight. So we'll move into public comment on any topic. Three minutes, naming where you, your address. Bob, I'm going to. Well, no, Bob, I'll let you go first because.
Bob Z Blauvelt. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, DPS, and all involved again for the dust control. It was so nice to step out of my house this evening and not have to inhale dust. It was nice to drive through the neighborhood and see people on their rear decks. It means a lot. Thank you very much.
Get your car washed and you'll be all set.
I might find out what color it is again. With regards to the motion, I only have three minutes here, so I'm going to try and stay focused. First of all, Jim, when you were talking about the process, you mentioned how the same process was used to select the township manager, Derek Hale. There's no commission involved there. So that's a little different. But the police department, fire department, DPS, et cetera, do have commissions. It is their job to conduct the interviewing process, which includes reviewing the applicants and selecting. And by the board stepping in and intervening that, it's really not fair. You're taking away their responsibility. It's their job to do that. That's the township structure. It's the way township government is set up according to the MTA guidelines. So I feel very strong. I would support that motion. Talk about how the process, the process. The process changed somewhere along the line here. The original process was for the commissions to handle that. Somewhere along the line here, the board got involved. And again, it's not the board's job to do that. It's the commission's job. They bring the decision to you. You are the approval process, not the ones that get involved and do it. And with all due respect, I don't think I would dare put somebody on the board above anybody on that commission with the knowledge of what's going on in that department. That's what those people are there for. That's what they volunteered for. They know what's going in, in that department. And they know, they know as much as anybody. So why should the board step in and take that decision-making process away from them? It's not right. Under the township structure, the responsibility for the interviewing process belongs to the commissions. And that includes selecting their applicants. We don't need to intervene and reduce it. We're not speeding the process up at all. You sit on a commission, you take on the responsibility. You can look through all those applicants just as well as anybody else can. And you are just as qualified, with all due respect, as anybody on this board is. So I support that motion. And I'd like to see the process get back to where it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Other comments? Seeing none. Have I missed? Oh, 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 I'm sorry, that's right.
I've got a few.
Fire away.
All right, first one. Alfred Janatin, Meridian Road. On Thursday, on Thursday 11, 2023, a truck going off the island had accidentally dropped a load of dirt onto Parkway. Earlier that week, I went to our information desk to ask about missing dirt that was taken from our front ditch. Information, this dirt was kept in an area in Groseal Township. So why was dirt removed from island? Also, when bike path was made, it should have given to our neighbor's property as not to have ponds formed near this new bike path. Okay. I got three more.
Okay, no, no, I was going to ask you, is there, is there contact information on that one? If there is, could you pass that on to me tomorrow?
I have an email.
I will, okay, I'll get ahold of him.
So I think what he was discussing is the path over here adjacent to the new build, the storage units. It's got a bit of a low spot. Water builds up there because there is an associated drainage.
Ah, okay.
Okay. Next one. Christine Davis, Canterbury. I am writing in regards to the way the process of hiring the new fire chief is being handled. It seems very clear that the normal practice of having a transparent process administered by the township commission than submitting the recommendation to the board has been circumvented by Supervisor Budney. I am in full support of the GIFA letter released to the board that raises very valid concerns. I cannot support any fire chief that doesn't live on Groseal. Why just one issue is response time? Someone who lives off island has to deal with bridges, whether they are closed for repairs or simply open to summer boat traffic. Second, trains. Could be a 15-minute delay, two over a half hour is a train stops. And that person has to find an alternate route to get across a bridge. Third, commitment to this neighborhood or town. Having a chief that does not live on Groseal is a threat to the resident's safety. I can say this because last year, my husband was on a commercial-sized lawnmower that caught fire. The seat was actually over the gas tank, which was on fire. We live behind Park Lane Elementary School. After the 911 call, the fire chief showed up before the fire truck. He entered our yard from the Park Lane grounds, got the fire under control before the truck arrived. He saved my husband from being burned, possibly over 50% of his body. If the fire truck would have stopped on Canterbury to find the address, time would have been delayed. Time would have delayed everything. But they were instructed by the chief where to go. We are talking a few minutes. A person who lives off island couldn't possibly have responded so quickly. A chief who does not reside here cannot possibly know the island like a resident. Also, we are a volunteer department. It's a real, it's a real, it's a really slap in the face not to consider someone who already works for the department and actually puts their lives on the line for our safety. This isn't a nine-to-five job just to collect a paycheck and go home. It's a 24-hour job. As residents, expect that their calls for help won't be delayed. Although, although it not be a law of residency required, I can name at least five cities where it is a requirement. Supervisor Budney's committee seems like a purely selfish, politically motivated attempt to show the residents he's in charge and has no regard for current hiring procedures, nor the Groseal Fire Department volunteers, and is willing to put the resident's safety at risk. I urge the board members to start the interview process again, including the full commission and give the current firefighters a chance to interview. If not, this current process of having two candidates that do not reside here could have serious consequences, including many volunteers quitting. Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. All right. Let's see, my third one is Mary Brezhnerhan, Bellevue. On May 10 of this year, my husband went fishing with a friend. His friend packed his truck with a, parked his truck with a trailer on front, on, I'm having trouble with this one. His friend parked his truck with a trailer on our front lawn. He did that so he was not blocking the driveway while they were gone. They were gone for about four to five hours. A few hours later, we received a letter from the Township of Groseal indicating that we were in violation of Code 285-12.1B2. Basically, the code says that you cannot park on your lawn or any other unpaved area in your residence. The truck with trailer was not obstructing the road and was not bothering any of our neighbors. When we received the letter, I was quite upset. The letter said that you had 10 days to take care of this matter, or you would be fined and possibly taken to court. I felt threatened and harassed. I had never heard of such a ridiculous rule. I immediately contacted Julie Cordes, ordinance enforcement officer, and she returned my call the following day. I expressed my concern over the matter with various reasons why residents may need to park on their lawn. People may have extra guests over, graduation parties, loading and unloading items near your car, truck, or van. I also told her that I would have, it would have been nice to knock on the door for an explanation. She said that she couldn't have the time to knock on everyone's door, but the township had time to write and mail us a letter. We live in a small community. Most residents take care of their property and are kind to their neighbors. Parking on your lawn should not be a crime. If someone parks on their lawn, it is usually for a specific reason and a temporary condition. This ordinance should be revised. If a resident is continually parking vehicles on their front lawn that are causing a nuisance to the neighbors, then Julie may need to say something. The truck and trailer on our front lawn was not there for 24 hours. Nobody should receive a letter from a mere drive-by with no explanation. We are a unique community. Our township board should be working with the community, not against it. Thank you. And my last one, it's nice now that I talk more than everybody else. Luanne Anderson, and I will apologize because it does look like she did not put her address, but I will read it anyway since I already started. There has been a lot of discussion these days regarding the ordinance have, ordinance of having boats, RVs, et cetera, in your driveway. We feel that the ordinance should be looked at as, to possibly allow people to, a couple of days, to load, unload, work on RV or boat, and then put back in storage. It is nearly impossible to do this in a tight storage area. We have no backyard, side yard, or neighbors, and have a large driveway. No one has ever complained about a small boat or RV in our driveway till last year, when Julie started randomly coming down on people, while other homes in tight neighborhoods are an absolute mess and have been for years and some for decades. This is an active boating and camping island, and this ordinance needs to be reconsidered for today's lifestyles. We do not live in an HOA community. I have lived here since 1965 and have never seen such unfair treatment where some are allowed and others not. We take our RV to Florida for six months, and there is no way it can be loaded, unloaded, and cleaned in a storage lot where slides cannot be put out or fridge freezer turned on. We also take a few trips in the summer, as many others do. I have spoken with Jamison, and he said, "I requested that Planning Commission take up a measure to make certain criteria so a boat or RV can be in a drive." They declined to take it up, preferring the current ordinance. I think it's time to get this before the board and consider some changes. Thank you. I'm done.
Jamison, would you like to work on that?
I think it is something that, that we have to look at. I was disappointed, I know, when the Planning Commission said no to you on that. Yeah, I think it's an issue that we, as a board, need to take up, because I do think the boat and RV ordinance is a little bit draconian in the wording. And I, I wasn't aware of the park-on-lawn ordinance, but I think there should probably be some situations where you can park on your lawn, so I suppose we should package those two up.
Yeah, well, and, and that parking on the lawn, yeah, I mean, when you, you know, if you, a Saturday, and you park your, your car and trailer because you got the boat in the water, and then you're going to take it out at night, and you get a, you end up getting a violation, yeah, possibly a different way of approaching that, like, which, which people don't realize, but they can actually, if they're going to do something, of course, they don't even know that the ordinance exists, but if they do know, they can contact the community development and tell them, "I'm going to have my RV in my, in my front driveway because we're going on a trip, you know, give me, I mean, you know, give me some time to work on it."
Doesn't the ordinance allow up to two weeks?
The ordinance doesn't allow an RV or boat ever to be parked here.
No, it just says it can't be.
Thought you could have a camper in your.
You can add one for, yeah, there is something on there, one, up to one week in a year, like if you have relatives come, they can, they can go on there, but not the homeowner.
But it has to be behind the curtilage of the house, the forwardmost portion of the house, right?
So, I mean, it just points that, there's, there's ordinances there that people, our people actually use and do. We need to have those ordinances adjusted, possibly adjusted to fit the residents of the island.
Jamison, some communities allow for permits for burning if you're going to have a outdoor fire, campfire, or something like that. Just a thought, you're the expert in the area, I'm not, but it seems to me, when I go up to Isasko County, if I'm going to have a fire, I get a burn permit. And if I have company over, just go down, fill out the burn permit and do that. It seems to me that if we had something similar where somebody's going to have their boat or their RV out there for, say, four days, pick a number, get a permit, or at least let the township.
Yeah, I suppose that's an option as well. I think we did.
Look at that and say, hey, this is something, they've requested a permit, and it's a limited use, so it's the best of both worlds. We're not going to have somebody parking their boat in violation of the ordinance, which the commission doesn't want to change, but at the same time, we recognize that there are needs that people have to go ahead and load, offload, winterize, and do those kinds of things. So I would encourage maybe the use of a permit with community development.
Yeah, I think that would be right for the RV portion, maybe. I think we had some language put together, Derek, so maybe I'll just reengage with you, and we can pick this back up, so.
You'd have to, I think you'd have to, probably, you have to deal with the Planning Commission, too. That's why Kyle wasn't here.
Jim, if I can just, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jamison, did you have?
I was just having a sidebar.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Anyway, if I could just make a quick comment, you know, on the Ms. Brezhnerhan's email.
Yes.
She said that her friend of her husband, I think it was, if I heard that right, was maybe there four to six hours. They went fishing, and she got the letter and noticed, "There is no parking on the lawn, I get it." But the issue is, it takes long, she can't stop at everybody's place, I'm not knocking that. I think maybe it's time, maybe the ordinance officer get out of the truck, see what happened, and this is how we want policing done on Groseal. This is what I tried to teach. We try to do it for the people. An easy knock on the door, and she would say, you know, they left. I will tell them, we won't do it again, we'll find a place for it if that's it. But there is those issues that we used to deal with in the police department, and I know that, you know, there's always a circumstance, and if you're not taking advantage of an ordinance, we try to work with the people, that's why everything isn't a ticket, I get it. But to get a letter two weeks later that this occurred because it's not there every day, it's only there for four hours, you can simply run the plate and know it's not there, doesn't belong there. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do, so maybe it took more time to go back, write the letter out, and send the letter, than just get out of the truck and go up to the door. I'm sorry, but maybe we need to look at.
Community policing.
Our little bit different how we're going to handle this ordinance, because I know that the complaints are flying in. But I get it, when you do enforcement, look, you're going to get complaints, I get that. I fully understand that. That's not, I mean, if you've ever got a complaint as a police officer, maybe you're sitting in your car way too much. I get, I don't have a problem with that, I really do. I don't have a problem with that, but, and I'm not trying to just knock the individual, I'm just saying maybe the process, once again, on how we handle some of the people out here, and how we handle our own issues, should be looked at in a little different light.
Well, yeah, I certainly would agree with that, Joe.
That's all, thank you.
We need to do that. We need to look both at our, our ordinance enforcement program and how it's done, as well as the ordinances themselves, and, and if, if changes need to be made, we should make them. All right. With that, we have our, our reports. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Well, I, not to be the nudge in the room, but it is a public comment, and we should remember that even though the audi, the people that you are reading from are not here, our policy is not to have a Q and A or a response, so, because we could be sitting here for hours, though it's nice that the residents are writing in and giving us things to discuss. Maybe we need to come up with a way to, to handle that in the future. But, you know, like, we try not to have a debate with the residents when they're up at the podium, so I'm always the one that has to bring up stuff like that, I'm sorry. On a happier note, the township is holding a special election on August 8, 2023, and the ballot will consist of four millage renewal questions. A millage renewal to maintain current police department operations, a millage renewal to maintain current recreation department operations, a millage renewal for continuing off-island library services, and a millage renewal to improve and maintain drain and storm water management projects. I know these are very hot-button issues in our community, and we will have people lining up to vote for hours on end, but we are looking for a few good men and women, young and old, to work with us on this election. It's your last chance to be part of a smaller election before we go into the mega-election cycle of 2024. Brian is going to be assigning about five people per precinct, so if you are interested in working, make sure you get in touch with Brian early so that he knows that you're interested in working this election. The next thing I'd like to point out is, as you know, our recreation director resigned, and with regret, we accepted that resignation. But I wanted to assure everybody that the department is still running smoothly. Derek is, for the time being, kind of the point person, as is Annette and Chad Novak and a number of people, both in the department and on the commission, we're all teaming together. Kim will be back for Island Fest, I mean, she did not, I, I don't want you to think she left us in the lurch, she definitely did not. But that if you have a background in recreation, or even, as Kim and Derek pointed out, hospitality management, because our recreation department touches on a lot of different areas. We have golf, we have pool, we have marina, we have a centennial farm, horses, et cetera, so it's a wide range of activities that our new recreation director will have to handle. So the position is posted, and the posting closes on June 14. So if you are interested, send your resume and a letter to our township manager, Derek Thiel. It is posted on our groseal.com website, and of course, if you want more information, you can contact our township offices. What Brian has now put on the Elmo is the new Groseal Recreation Program Guide, which is really just a portion of what we do in recreation, but we have contracted with our Groseal, oh, the Groseal Grand, and they are now publishing our recreation guide as part of their summer installment. You will have gotten one of these mailed to you, but they're available all over town. Take a look at it, keep it handy. It's got everything in it that you'll want to know about programs being put on by the recreation department. And I want to kind of give a shout-out because Annette Lessenberry and, oh, Annette Tiso, I'm sorry, been here too long, and Kim worked on this guy together, and I think they did a fabulous job. And it is giving us a lot more information, but saving us some money at the same time, rather than having to do it as a separate mailer. Big excitement coming to the island, of course, we won't be having a meeting before, so Island Fest is coming, June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Of course, we've got the big fireworks on Saturday night with a rain date of Sunday. The parade is Saturday, 10:00 a.m., down, up or down sideways, Macomb Street. Be there or be square, I don't know if we can still say that. But that is going to be a very busy weekend here on Groseal. There are slated to be lacrosse tournaments, soccer tournaments, there's all kinds of activities here at the hangar, on the field, there's helicopter rides, the whole nine yards. I can hardly do it justice, so everybody remember that that is happening. And with that, I think that's the Clerk's report.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you. For the month of April, Groseal Township had a total of $29,209,000 invested in our various accounts, and these accounts generated a total of $81,058 in investment income with an average interest rate of 3.46%. Just by comparison, with similar amounts of money available, a year ago in April, we generated $3,112, so things are looking up as far as our investments are going. Finance Office is still working on compiling the data and fiscal year-end reports for the upcoming annual audit by our, our outside auditors. From the Airport Commerce Park Commission, our next meeting is June 19 at 6:00. But just wanted to mention that the roof on the hangar has been completed pending, as of Friday afternoon, it was still pending final inspection, but the work on the roof is, is completed. And the work on taxiway, A, the replacement of that taxiway at the airport, mobilization is set to begin June 5, so it will be right after, right after Island Fest concludes. And from our DPS Commission, our next meeting is June 13 at 7:00. And as some of you may have noticed, some of our 2023 road projects are underway. South Point, Grow Road, and East River, chip ceiling has been completed. I think we're only lacking striping on, on the roadways. Contrary to what you might have seen on Facebook, we are not turning any roads into gravel Quite the opposite, we're turning Park Lane into a paved road. And just, we're a caution, because there's going to be a lot of roadwork going on this summer, along with the work on the bridge on Meridian. If you, if you see work going on, roadwork, slow down, watch the flaggers, pay attention to them, try to give, try to give that a wide berth if you can. And more road, roadwork will be starting about May 30, right after Memorial Day, and right after the Memorial Day holiday, and they will be moving north to south in some of the, most of the projects that are going on. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Trustees' reports. Jamison.
Good evening. I sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. In bicycle and pedestrian news, we met last Thursday. One of the things, one of the big things we talked about was kind of a fact-finding mission on the viability of a traffic control device at Meridian Elementary along Meridian Road. So we'll, more to follow on that. So we'll, more to follow on that. And then I believe work starts next week on the Gibraltar Bay Connector. Is that accurate, Derek?
Probably going to be next week, weather-dependent.
Okay. Which will, I've explained this a couple times, but they're adjusting the fence line on the east end of the airport in order to connect our Grow Road Trail with the Gibraltar Bay Unit nature area, so. And is there, this came up during BPAC, is there any intent to put a plaque out there honoring the buyers and their donation to the project?
I think there is an intent to do that, yeah. I don't think we've worked out exactly what that's going to look like, but I think that's the intent, yes.
Okay. And as a reminder, a local family donated about one-third of the funds to make this project possible, and that was the buyer's family. So again, we just really appreciate their generosity. On the Zoning Board of Appeals front, we'll be meeting tomorrow and to review an appeal concerning a car wash. And I want to thank John Carnago for his service. What I can say about John was that he was a very ethical person, and he was a man of integrity, which is great to have on the Zoning Board of Appeals. In fact, John once brought a ZBA case forward regarding his own fence and had it denied. So nobody could say John was corrupt. So he was a, he was a good guy, and he did a good job for ZBA. So thanks for your service, John. We appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jamison. Carl.
Three matters. Number one, I have the pleasure of sitting on Greenway's open space on June 10th, Saturday, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. We're going to have a dedication for the official opening of the Ferry to Gage Trail that replaces the old trail that ran generally about 150 yards east of the canal. It's been since shifted, and that is ready. It has been used, but the official dedication will be at Saturday, June 10th, 10:00 a.m. All the board members are invited to attend. And just a little bit of dedication to a great project that's making a difference. Jane Fajal went on Facebook about a week and a half ago, and the responses that she had were just all positive, all genuine, a lot of happy people out there and how good it looks. And hats off to John Keim and his crew for making it possible, and Derek Thiel for helping to make it presentable and push the project through on a, on a good project that community seems to really enjoy. Second body I sit on is the Groseal Fire Commission. I had my first meeting, as noted earlier, last week. We do have the interview scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 23rd, at 4:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. respectively. In this room, public are invited. Brian, I understand that there's going to be televising of that potentially?
Yes, it will be televised. I talked to the chairperson late this afternoon. Televised from 4:00 until 5:55, because ZBA starts at 6:00, and it's their regular meeting. So at that point, if it's still going on, you're going to have to give the room up for ZBA. And that's...
Yes.
So they gotta get up. I mean, he means physically get up.
Correct. I mean, ZBA has a scheduled meeting at 6:00, and that is going to take precedent over a special meeting. So yes, if they're not done at 6:00, they will be, have to go to a conference room. So that's what I got.
The Fire Commission also has reported that the state of Michigan did a compliance audit on equipment and hazardous waste disposal, passed with flying colors. Chief has also reported two new recruits have passed their test and will be certified with a third hopefully completed by August. Now have 18, according to Chief Camilleri, looking for a full staff of 28, which will be based upon expanding social media footprint, an open house in August, and hopefully applications where we can put people through classes and start ramping up the number of members in the association. Volunteer firefighters are more than a million strong nationwide. They do a terrific job. They also do a terrific job locally, and without them, we wouldn't be the community that we are. And hats off to the Fire Department for all that you do. With respect to Ms. O'Farrell's retirement, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the interviews that she did almost six years ago to the day. I think it was the 15th of May in 2017, she came to the township. It's noted in tonight's action item that Ms. O'Farrell brought a positive attitude. I remember one of the very first things that she did was to try and open up the pool, and we had a pump failure that was a day or two before the pool was scheduled to open. Kim did not have anybody else to do it, so she took it on her own initiative to drive down to north-central Indiana, pick up the parts, and bring them back up here so they could be installed. She had numerous contacts in Ohio as a result of her prior experience as a rec director that she brought here and allowed her to rely on referrals and recommendations from others. The same motion notes that she created a lot of rec opportunities. I remember Ms. O'Farrell sitting down and saying there are some rec programs where you have maybe a half a dozen or eight people come, and you have to decide whether that participation in the cost of the program are in balance. And if they're not, you sometimes have to make tough decisions. I think that is reflected in the fact that when Ms. O'Farrell started six years ago, the capital fund had approximately $7,000 in it for rec. And at one point, she had that pushed up to over $200,000. That was a result of a laser focus on the bottom line, on overtime. And as she said, if you sink, if you see a sink that needs to be scrubbed, sometimes that's what the manager does, and that's what she did. As a result of that, she was able to bring a significant amount of financial stability to rec. I personally found her to be very helpful, very positive in all the things that were highlighted there with creating rec opportunities and financial stability. She will be missed. My opinion, she's raised the bar, and I think that whoever the next rec director is going to be, he or she is going to have some, some work to do to try and measure what she has done. And that concludes my report with Kim. Good luck and Godspeed.
Joe.
Good evening. I sit on the Police Commission. We meet in this room, 3rd Tuesday of the month, at 7:00 p.m. And we've still constantly working on the budget and the funding mechanisms for the next five years. And Jim, if I can just remind you, if we can get a meeting going with the five, like in the next maybe two or three weeks, whenever Island Fest is over, we can talk about that funding mechanism, we can meet once more.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get in early June.
Whenever you, whenever you got time. It's, there's not any hurry on it, just after, we get some things out of the way. And also, I'd like to thank Kim O'Farrell also. I hope the best in your future endeavors, and I hope the best in your new job, and I thank you for all your years of service here. Thank you.
That's it, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Derek, what do you have for us?
Just really quickly, there were some comments made by the Treasurer earlier about the roads projects that are upcoming. I just wanted to go a little bit more into detail. The diagram that you see here on the overhead shows the various sections of road that we are going to be working on. Horse Mill, West River Road, Bellevue, East River Road, and then some remaining work down on South Point. The circles that you see here are intersections that we're going to be redoing, and then in the green are additional sections of road that we're looking to add to the project. So the action item that was deleted for this evening, we didn't have costs on those adds yet, so that'll be a change order coming up before the board, more likely at your next meeting. So that change order will address these two stretches of road, which is Church west of Meridian, and then down near the West River Road ramp. We're going to be redoing that intersection and some pavement going north from that section. The projects will start at the north end of the island, as the Treasurer had mentioned, and this stretch of Horse Mill will be the first stretch of road that we're going to be doing, and then they'll move to West River Road. Because the projects are slated to start right around May 30th, we wanted to stay away from the south end of the island because of Island Fest. So, but as we get a more detailed schedule, get it out to the residents so they're aware, the May 30th timeline is just kind of an estimate right now, even though I know it's, it's coming up close to, to, you know, current day. But we hope to have a better schedule here very shortly, within the next couple of days, we can get out to the residents and the bus garage and public safety and whatnot. So just a little bit more detail about what we're going to be doing so that the residents are aware. And in the scope of this work here, this is milling fill. So the chip seal work that happened on South Point, Grow Road, and East River Road, that was a preventative maintenance activity. That was not a resurfacing. That wasn't intended to be a resurfacing. It more like, more likely is, or more is like a, a layer of like Saran Wrap that you put over the top of the road that helps to, to seal it and to protect it. Those roads were done about five years ago with that same material, that same method, and they eventually smoothed out as you drive on them more often. But really, it's like a coat of paint over those roads to try to maintain their longevity and continue to have a decent road there. We do though, those type of treatments on roads that still have some life left on them to prolong the life, it's not a resurfacing. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Couple other items. I know Kim was mentioned by a number of you. I agree with all of you. She was a great asset to the community, and it was a pleasure working with her, and we'll be sorry, we're sorry to see her go. We do have the advertisement out, as mentioned earlier. I think the deadline is the 14th to the 15th of June, so information is available on our website about that vacancy. Let me run to my seat here real quick, because I got more or two other items. Township Hall. Township Hall is closed next Monday for Memorial Day, so just wanted to let the residents know about that. And with regards to the ordinances that we were talking about earlier, I am encouraged to, to hear the conversation about, you know, the change. So the ordinance enforcement officer enforces the ordinances that are on the books, but if the residents want to see a change in those ordinances, that is the proper way to go about it, having that conversation about if the ordinance on, the ordinances on the books aren't reflective of what the community wants any longer, you make changes to those ordinances to reflect what the, the community wants. And it sounds like there's been a pretty consistent pressure about changing some of these. So I'm encouraged to hear that the conversation is, hey, we need to look at these and move forward rather than, you know, going after the ordinance officer, because that individual, no matter who it is, is just enforcing what's on the books, and that's their job. So more than happy to help out with that process. I know as council member, board member Jamison had mentioned earlier, Yager had mentioned earlier, we had done some work on that in the past, so I think we've kind of got a start on that. So to be able to pick that up, I think should be a pretty easy thing to do. So we'll get moving on that and get something in front of the board to consider. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks.
Question if I may, Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah, certainly.
Derek, one of the questions on social media was the use of the chip sealing as a Band-Aid, and why isn't it just something that we should replace the road? My understanding is chip sealing extends the life, as you've indicated, and it's about 10% of what the road replacement would be, latest figures I heard.
Yeah, I mean, just like preventative maintenance for anything that you have, you know, the more you do preventative maintenance, the, the longer that, that asset lasts. So those roads are in as good a condition as they are now, because five years ago, they did chip sealing. So, and, and there are limits on that. Some roads have gone too far, and at that point, you have to mill and resurface them. But really, it's like putting a coat of paint, you know, on your wood siding. You know, if the wood underneath is rotten, it doesn't make sense to do that, because it doesn't help out at all, it just covers something that is bad already. But those roads are still in good shape. We want to keep them in good shape for as long as possible, and that's what chip seal does.
And is that chip sealing accurate when I say 10%? That's a number that I remember being banted about previously as opposed to a full sale replacement.
That sounds about accurate, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Just a few things. The DTE project that was tying up Bellevue Road and Ruthmere, and the project, I believe, is completed, and they're just doing restorations and cleanup.
Yeah, they're repaving that whole road that that project was on. I think they're just waiting on the top coat, so.
The Ruthmere?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. As part of their finishing up, but everything was pulled through and came through okay. So that, that's wrapping up. DDA has a meeting in this room on, I'm sorry, DDA has a meeting this Thursday. They will be in the conference room, because our, our meeting will be in the, in the boardroom and be on TV. For any of our residents out there that might need help with their water bills, GLEWA has a, a program called RAP, which is Water Residential Assistance Program. And Derek, I'm going to, I'll, I'll pass this information on to you. You can contact the DPS Department if you need any help with the water bills. We talked about the chip seal, because we did have people, when they started that, we, we got, we got people calling us, telling us, what are you doing, turning our, turning our roads into gravel roads? But it's, it's, it's actually a special trip. It's a chip that is put down, and it's just part of the process, and I think we've talked about that enough. One last thing, and not to belabor it, we've had a lot of talk about the fire, Fire Chief. I, I, you know, a couple of things were posted in social media. One by the, by the Fire Association, and the individual, the reason I'm bringing it up is because we do want the people to know what is the process that we're going through. First of all, it is, it is, it is the process. Bob, who unfortunately left, said the process is to have the commissions do the interviews. That is not the process. Nowhere, nowhere does it indicate that. It's always been for the administration to do most of the interviews and pass that on to their commission people. A lot of times, or most of the time, you're passing, that group would be passing on one individual and say, this is who we vetted out and we came up with, and give that to the commission to recommend or not recommend. So what we're doing is something, if it were, if it was that it was the commissions, they've taken it out of the section, or dealing with commissions, and I've been here since 2012, and it's always been done this way. So I don't know where people are getting that idea that it's the commissions that do the interviews. Now, there may be people on the commission that are part of the interview process, but to have the whole commission do it, that's not the way it's done. So one thing that bothered me about the letter that was published, it had 18 sentences in it. 14 sentences were, had, had wrong statements in them. And I think part of that is because people tend to put things out and never do their research. No one that posted anything on social media ever came to the township, to us, and asked what was going on. And this is not something that hasn't been going on for quite some time. So a lot of the inaccurate and wrong statements that were made in that letter, I think, were probably made, were, were written with good intent, but were wrong because they never bothered to check to see what was going on or what had transpired. So with that, Derek, if you would, again, run through exactly how the process was done. And I would add one other thing, because I guess I am getting a little frustrated with this Budney stuff. There is nothing that I do on my own that, that I shouldn't be doing. I don't, I don't tell Derek how to run his job. I don't tell Derek how to do anything. We talk a lot, we talk things through, we do things as a board. Budney doesn't do anything by himself up here. It's by a board. It's by a board vote, and that's the way it should be. So I just wish people would look into things a little more before they talk or write something. And Derek, if you would, just explain.
Carl did a really good job, I think, earlier of, of giving a lot of detail. Just fill a couple items in. The advertisement for the position... The advertisement for the position went out to a lot of different groups, MML, MTA, various State of Michigan, you know, firefighter association groups, Association of Chiefs, that type of thing, local sources, whether it be our website, or Facebook, or News Herald. You know, we tried to cast up a pretty wide net with regards to getting the word out there about these positions. And as a result, we did end up getting 28 applications. We use Indeed, LinkedIn, things like that as well. So, and we try some of the older methods, some of the newer methods. We really try to get the word out there. Ended up getting 28 applicants, so we did have some internal applicants. And all of them were given consideration, consideration by the group that was described. All the names were taken off the applications. And each individual person within that group ranked the 28 applications independent of the next person. So, and once that was complete, all of those rankings got put into an aggregate ranking. So, we wanted to make sure our analysis, our initial analysis of those applications were, were, you know, not influenced by any other of the member of that group's rankings until they were completed. That information was put together for, into an aggregate ranking, 1 through 28, and the group decided to interview a total of six applicants. Also, six applicants were interviewed, and consensus based upon those, those interviews was come, was, was arrived at for these two individuals that were then recommended to the, to the Fire Commission. So, everybody that had applied was given consideration. As was mentioned earlier, you know, we are not by law allowed to consider residency. There is a 20-mile requirement that we can put out there as a requirement, but we would go against what state law is if we said that you have to live here or give preferential treatment to somebody that did have residency within the township. That information, once again, was passed along to the Fire Commission, and, and what's happening, I guess, tomorrow is the interview of those two applicants. So, you know, we have to be very careful about staying within the confines of what the state law allows for us to consider. If we don't abide by that law, we can get ourselves into trouble with labor issues, with discrimination in employment, which obviously is something that we have to be very aware of, because it is a reality in this day and age. And it has been a reality for a while, and is a legitimate issue for those that have issue with that or take concern with how an employment process follows. So, that is what we, we did. That was the process that we followed. Tried to be as independent as we possibly could with taking names off the applications and reviewing all those applications against the requirements of the job, the education, the experience, to try to put together that list of individuals that we felt would serve the position the, the best way that it could be served. There was actually a resident that was in the final six that we interviewed. So, you know, we didn't not interview people that lived on the island. So, wanted to be clear about that. So, that was the process that we followed, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have about how that, how that went, so.
Thank you, thank you. So, with that, my report's complete. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.